Good evening, it's 7:10. Sorry for the delay, we had a longer than anticipated closed session. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'll ask for a roll call by Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Ross-Burgen?
Here.
Mr. Kleindings?
Here. If you'll all please rise for the flag salute.
Ron, if you'll lead us, sir.
The right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I couldn't help but think after Ron led us that it sounded much like Lou Rawls or... She was that deep voice, were you, Ron? Tonight our invocation is by Reverend Bob Brown from the First Southern Baptist Church. Is Reverend Brown here tonight? Mr. Oden, would you lead us in prayer, sir?
Let us pray. Merciful Father, we are thankful indeed for the opportunity to approach the throne of grace, and we pray for wisdom, direction, and guidance. We pray for this city, for our aged members and our children, and everyone in between. We pray that the things, the decisions that we make tonight will be for the betterment of our community, not only presently, but for the future. And may all that we say and do bring glory to your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I believe we had a presentation scheduled for tonight, is that still on? California Integrated Waste Management Board? It's postponed, alright, then we'll turn to the report on the posting of the agenda, please, by Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures. Additionally, there was a supplemental agenda posted last Friday concerning the El Dorado Palm Springs Limited Tolling Agreement. That will be item 20 for action tonight. The city manager is withdrawing item 2 on your consent agenda. And additionally, I did pass out to the council a revised minute order for your consent agenda, item 10. That should be on your desk in front of you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now turn to our city attorney, Mr. David Alashire, for a report on matters discussed in closed session. Mr. Alashire?
Yes, council and agency met in closed session. The items listed on the closed session agenda, real property negotiations involving the Spa Hotel. We gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving Star Canyon Resorts, the JV Gold, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item is on the agenda tonight for public action. Real property negotiations involving Sunrise Village Mobile Home Park, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving Akanto Drive in South Palm Canyon, Bill Barron, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The Plaza Theater item was not discussed. Real property negotiations involving the Visitor Center, Fred Elge, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving the tram gas station with Killen Burnett Companies, gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving the golf course property, Bill Swank and Martin Burke, we gave a status report, no action was taken. A matter of litigation, Sun Gold Development, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The Desert Water Agency litigation was not discussed. We discussed exposure litigation, one case, no action was taken. And we conducted, partially conducted, the city attorney evaluation, no action was taken. We did not conduct the police chief evaluation.
Police chief?
That's what it said.
Thank you, sir.
That's what it says. I don't think we talked about it.
You're accurate in that report, sir, thank you. The Housing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and the Financing Authority have no business scheduled for tonight's meeting. We do have work before us as the Community Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll have a joint public hearing, so we'll convene as the Redevelopment Agency and the city council in a joint session, and we have a joint public hearing. And the first item before us is Schleps LLC, the Disposition and Development Amendment Number 1. And I'll turn to Mr. Ready and his staff for a report. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a development project on South Palm Canyon, and I would ask Mr. Raymond to give the details. It is somewhat complicated, but it's a very good project. And with that, Mr. Raymond, if you could inform us, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I will give a succinct staff report, it is a, it's a long staff report. But the, this resolution, or this action amends the previously approved DDA Disposition Development Agreement of Schleps, which is S.C.H.L.P.S.L.L.C. They're the developers of the Star Canyon Resort on South Palm Canyon Drive. And this, we originally approved this, or you originally approved this, last September, on September 19th, for a resort which was to be a hotel and timeshare resort with 210 hotel rooms and, I think, 176 timeshare units. Given the events of September 11th and the current state of hotel financing, the developer proceeded but was unable to finance the hotel portion of the, of the resort. And what that led to was, over the course of the winter and the spring, reconfiguring and sort of renegotiating the project as an all-timeshare resort. And there's some minor reconfiguration of the insides of the rooms that allowed that to go forward. And the project came back to you as a planning approval in July for the change in entitlement from the, from the hotel to the timeshare. The DDA, the previous DDA, provided financial assistance in the form of a land write-down, where the developer, as one corporation, provided the $4.6 million for the land acquisition and lent it to the agency who then completed that sale, and then the agency conveyed it back to the developer along with a note that we would pay off over 18 years. That, that financial structure is still, is still in place in the, in the DDA amendment. There are a couple of things that the DDA amendment amends. One is that the, the project description and the timetable. Obviously, the timetable that was approved and contemplated in an agreement a year ago is, is now totally out of whack. It's now taken a year to get back to this point, so that had to be reset. And then the project, project description, changing it from the hotel and timeshare to a timeshare project. In return for that, the, the developer has agreed to work with the city on implementing a financial impact mitigation fee that's part of the, part of the interval cost of each interval. And what that does is it helps offset the, the loss in transient occupancy tax that's part of the project. And that comes out to $28.50 per interval. So if you're an interval owner that you buy as part of your annual maintenance fee or your property, property maintenance fee, that's included as part of that. So an annual fee that you pay of $475, somewhere within that is, is this fee. And there's a, there's a number of, there's a number of, of items, development costs, that that helps reimburse the, reimburse the city for. So the amendment does a number of things. One is it resets the, the project description to reflect the current project. Number two, it resets the scheduled performance so that it can go forward on the current schedule. And third, it helps to implement the, the additional fee. And otherwise, the, the agreement, the amendment's rather long, but the agreement is otherwise in place. And that, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Members of the council and agency, any questions of staff on their report at this time? Very good, seeing none. Does that complete your report, sir?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor.
This is a public hearing, a joint one, by the agency and council. And I'll ask anyone wishing to address the council and agency on this hearing to come forward at this time. Very good, seeing no one. Let the record show that no one chose to speak. We'll close the public hearing. Council and agency, there is three actions before you. One resolution by the agency, and two resolutions by the council. And we'll entertain discussion, debate, and action if you so entertain.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
I will move the resolutions. Three.
All three, thank you. Motion to approve by Mr. Oden, and a second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll pass.
Well, the one comment there, we're still getting a few changes, so if the approval could be subject to minor modifications in a form approved by a city attorney or an agency council.
I agree.
Maker and second concur with that?
Yes.
Okay, any comments at this time?
I'll only make one quick comment. I have been with this project from its inception and have watched it change from what it was initially introduced as, and watched through transition and supported the transition up until this point. I am compelled to, to vote, I think differently than the majority of the council will tonight, based on the fact that I think at this point, the deal has moved a little bit too far afield of where I had hoped this project would have gone. I haven't got a clear sense of a secure revenue stream for the city of Palm Springs. I do see a tremendous asset being built with timeshares, but I have not got the assurance that the revenue stream is safeguarded or protected. And I would have felt much better if we could have gone through some of that work to further our security in that area. But I wish no ill to the project nor the developer. It will be, in fact, an asset. It just does not secure my confidence based on the financial components. Okay? I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross-Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Nay. 4-1, it has been approved. We will now adjourn as the city council and convene... Why am I thinking that's not right? We're going to, we're going to adjourn as a CRA and convene as the council. Madam Clerk? No? Alright, then we'll adjourn as the city council, convene as the CRA, and we'll now turn to the audience. Anyone wishing to address in public comments the Community Redevelopment Agency? I have cards before me that I assume are for the council. But if anyone wishes to address the Community Redevelopment Agency, please come forward at this time. Very good, seeing none. We'll close public comments for the agency. There are no legislative items tonight for the CRA, so we will now adjourn as the CRA and reconvene as the city council. Members of the council, first order of business before us tonight is public comments. I have one request to speak card, and I'll call that speaker forward at this time. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please feel free to come forward after the initial speaker. You'll have three minutes. The first speaker is Nancy Stewart. Nancy, if I may ask you to come forward. Good evening and welcome. Again, there's a timer, I believe, in front of Mr. Oden and one in front of me. Clock will count down from three minutes, and welcome.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mayor and city council members. I'm here before you tonight, Nancy Stewart, as the vice-chairman of the tram board. And I just wanted to lighten everyone out in the TV land there, too, about what we're going to be doing in the next two months. We have something coming up rather quickly, Thanksgiving, for all of us to celebrate. And one of the things is, if you're considering going out to dinner, why don't you think going up to? Up, up the tram, we're going to have a wonderful Thanksgiving dinner. It will be, of course, turkey, we'll have other things available as well. And the price will be $27.80 for adults, so that's your ride and include your dinner. Starting on December 1st, which is Sunday, which will be our annual tree lighting ceremony, in that we will have a celebrity, Taylor Negron, who is well-known to younger folks in, in different motion pictures as Fast Times at Ridgemont High, The Last Boy Scout, Stuart Lil, and Angels in the Outfield. We also will have Coral Group, California Desert Coral Group will be singing a selection of holiday songs. And we have 4,000 bulbs that will be lit on that tree. And this is at 6:00 PM on Sunday evenings, so I ask all of those of you to join us. And then also, starting the 6th of December, every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're going to have choirs from all over Southern California performing at between 5:30 and 7:30 PM. Santa will be visiting with boys and girls on December 14th, a Saturday, from 11 till 3. And then also, on December 25th, Christmas Day and New Year's Day, we will be open. And people will be able to also enjoy our ride-and-dine special at that time, same price, $27.80. Also, no reservations are required on any of those, so come and enjoy. And hopefully, Mother Nature will cooperate and we'll have a little snow, too, so it might be a white Christmas. One other thing, and then I'll close, and that is, we're having a contest for youngsters to name our mascot, who is nameless. Although one board member said we should name him Rob or Robbie, but we already have one up there at the tram, so we thought we might select somebody, a different name. So that is through November 30th. Kids are asked to participate, and the winners will get four passes for a complete year for, for tram passes. So I think that's excellent. You can, November 30th is the deadline, and you can apply online at PSTRAMWAY.com. So thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving.
Good timing, thank you, Nancy. Anyone else wishing to address council during public comments? Very good, seeing no one. We'll close public comments. Council will now turn to your consent agenda. Again, item 2 has been withdrawn at the request of the city manager. And I will note my abstentions on item number 1. It is dealing with the Airport Residential Sound Insulation Program, and it was deemed by the FPPC that I have conflicts on the master plan, of which that is a part.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain on one warrant, please. 982015, husband-related.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I will also be abstaining on item number 1, business-related, and two warrants. 982026, 982024, business-related.
Very good, thank you. Members of council wishing to pull any issues or ask questions at this time? Otherwise, we have called item 2 and two abstentions noted on item 1, Mr. Mills and myself, and a number of abstentions by Ms. Russell-Spergen. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Also move the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion for approval of Ms. Russell-Spergen, and second by Mr. Oden. Any further comments, questions? If not, I'll ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross-Burgen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye, 5-0, deemed unanimous. There are no extended items from the consent calendar. We'll now turn to the public hearings on the agenda, item 13, the Camino Alturas Sewer Construction Refund Agreement. And I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And Mr. Fuller from the engineering, city engineer is going to give you the report on this. But I would just note that this is a creative and good way to assist citizens, in essence assisting us in building infrastructure. What we're requesting is that you approve this agreement where the, the builder, which is the citizen, will extend the infrastructure at their expense. And if, in fact, people in the future attach on, the reimbursements will be made at that time. But it's a good deal for the city, and I would ask Mr. Fuller to give you the details, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This public hearing is scheduled to consider approval of a sewer reimbursement agreement between the city and Bernard and Mary Gentner for reimbursement of costs to install a public sewer main within Camino Alturas. The Gentners had previously experienced frequent failures of their private septic system and sought to connect their home to the city's public sewer system. Unfortunately, the nearest sewer line was located 200 feet away. And although the Gentners attempted to coordinate with their neighbors to create an assessment district to construct the sewer line extension for their neighborhood, their attempts failed. So they took the initiative to front the costs for the sewer line extension, which was installed to city standards under city inspection and has been accepted for maintenance. The construction costs have been verified and are $62,550 after deducting costs associated specifically with the Gentners' onsite sewer line improvements. The city has well-established policies and procedures for recovering private investment for public sewer line construction, and in 1980, the city adopted a resolution outlining this policy. And for entering into sewer reimbursement agreements specifically for occasions such as this one, the policy outlines a procedure for noticing the affected property owners, scheduling public meetings to discuss the apportionment of costs, and holding a public hearing for approval by the city council of a sewer reimbursement agreement. Staff noticed a public meeting for September 25th to review the apportionment of costs with the affected property owners. Owners of two of the six affected properties attended this meeting, where the apportionment was outlined by the city engineer, with equal shares of the costs distributed to six properties, creating assessments of $12,510 for four properties and a half share of $6,255 for two properties. This reduced half share is assessments for the two properties located at 1935 and 1951 Camino Monte were allowed for the reason that an additional sewer line extension will be required in the future to service those properties. And if you refer to Exhibit A of the agreement, which I think is page 13A8, it shows a layout of the area that's affected by the agreement. The two properties that have the half share are the ones on the bottom of the page. The terms of the agreement were reviewed by the city attorney and includes provisions for reimbursement to the Gentners as funds are received. The agreement does not require a mandate that the other properties connect immediately. This requirement, or the requirement to pay the assessment and connect to the sewer system is established by the Uniform Plumbing Code, which prohibits permits for sewer septic system replacement if the systems fail and sewer service is available. So there's no guarantee that other sewer connections will be made in the future if the existing septic systems continue to function. And with city attorney's direction, the proposed agreement has a ten-year term with a future extension available through mutual agreement of the city and the affected property The last agreement that the city approved was in 1989 for the sewer line constructed by Ron Gilbreth in Cantina Way, and that agreement has functioned effectively as houses have been built or septic systems failed. And as that happens, Mr. Gilbreth recovers those costs through the building permits that are issued for the sewer connections. The same process would apply in this case. And with that, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, council. Questions on staff's report? Mr. Oden?
Now, you're saying that everyone is not required at this point to hook up, and there's a 10-year period in which to do so?
Well, there's a 10-year term on the agreement. The real deadline or requirement to connect is going to be dictated on how long their septic tank or septic system functions. So if the septic tank, you know, fails next week, then, you know, the plumbing code says if there's a sewer system available, you have to connect, because, you know, all of these codes and policies are to promote connection to public sewer systems.
Are there different needs based upon this configuration in terms of the need to hook up?
I don't know if I follow you.
Okay. As you look at the properties on the map, is there anything about how they are situated physically that would determine or make it more necessary for some properties to hook up immediately as opposed to others?
No. I mean, the need to hook up immediately, again, is when and if their septic tanks fail. I don't know if what you're asking is if there's additional work that's required for some of these properties to do when they connect, and that'll be true, because some of these properties will have to run longer laterals. I believe the topography, because it's on a hillside, some of the lots are lower than the sewer main. It was difficult to install the sewer main, because apparently it's all rock and it's on a hillside. And so there's going to be differences in costs for the onsite portion of the sewer connections that each property will have to incur, in addition to the cost of the sewer main extension itself.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Very good, I have two cards before me. Ayad Garaguri, and followed by Imad Girgis. If you'll come forward, sir? Good evening, sir. This is a public hearing. There are five minutes allotted to you, and again, the clock will count down. Your comments are welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Ayad Garaguri. I own the property of 380 Camino Alturas, which is a lot lower level-wise than where the current sewer system of Dr. Gentner is. On at least two occasions in the past before this was built, I have tried myself to install a sewer system directly from my house, involving, one of them was with Dr. Gentner, another one with another neighbor of mine. And both of them, because of technical difficulties, didn't go through, and I, if I may, I'll have Mr. Girgis address those technical aspects. The reason I'm here, I am not opposed to this agreement. I had applied for renewal of my septic system way before this took place, and when I reapplied for renewal, it was rejected. The reason that I applied for renewal before was to place some new pits to my current septic system. If I were to connect to the current sewer system as it stands, the costs would be extremely prohibitive for me to do so, because it will not be gravity-based. My understanding from speaking with my engineer and the Tri-State contractors is that during the beginning periods of the construction with Dr. Gentner, I believe we, through my engineer and Tri-State, we approached the city in order to, again, try to hook up at the same time. And we were denied because, again, to my understanding, it was going to be too close to the main water line, and that's why it was denied. So my purpose for being here today is to ask to have at least an exception made that I can renew my septic tank permit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Imad? Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Imad Girgis. I'm the engineer who's been helping Dr. Garaguri. Basically, the main problem, if you look at the planning, the sewer planning for the city, there was originally two sewer lines, one going down Camino Alturas, serving few properties, and then a separate one going at a deeper elevation, serving Dr. Garaguri. And because of the area's so rocky, it was not constructed way back then when they built the sewer. And we've tried so many times trying to get one sewer that helps everybody, and we didn't really succeed. And Mr. Gentner, he was able to build his sewer, which is only five feet deep. In order to serve Dr. Garaguri's property, the sewer needed to be at least 10 feet deep. And at the time, we talked to the contractor, and he said, he approached the city trying to devise the design, and it was rejected because of the depth and the proximity to the water line. And like he said, he applied for a septic tank permit way back then, and right now we have a soil report that says that we did the percolation test, and if he places two of his pits in the tennis court area, it would work with no problem. The reason the two pits are failing now is because they're up in his driveway, there is bedrock underneath, but if he moves them down below, the septic would work fine. His other option, of course, is to hook to Mr. Gentner's sewer via a pump. And of course, you know, maintenance issues and mechanical issues, and if the electricity shuts down, you have problems, so the convenience of having the septic, a good working septic, is at this point, I think, feasible to him, and that's why he's presenting his case today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this public hearing? Very good, seeing no one. We'll close the public hearing. Turn to council for questions or comments. Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I have a question about the renewal of his septic permit.
Well, again, I think that's a code issue. It's not something that would be quantified in the terms of the agreement. I think the only avenue, and the city attorney might want to correct me, is to exclude that property from any assessment, but then that makes the whole apportionment of the construction costs unfair. You know, he's correct. What happened during construction was they encountered all rock, and then they had, the street itself is very narrow. And so the topography, again, with it being the way it is, they just physically could not build the sewer line to the depth needed to provide gravity flow for everybody. So the only opportunity that that property will ever have is to have its own pump lift station onsite to then connect to the sewer main that was extended up the street. As far as not being, getting a permit for a septic tank repaired, again, I don't think that would be legal to have it exempted under the terms of the agreement, because it's part of the code, the plumbing code.
Mr. Alshair.
This is the first I've heard of this, so we haven't had a chance to talk with staff about what the options may be. A reimbursement agreement, the agreement you have before you is a contract between the city and the developer who installed the line and who is entitled to reimbursement. So I don't think the city can unilaterally change the terms of that agreement. We would have to discuss it with the property owner. If there is some valid reason why this property should not be included, we would need to talk that over with the other party to the reimbursement agreement and see if we can reach agreement on that. So my recommendation is that unless there's some timing issue, I would think that the matter should be deferred so that staff and I could meet and I could have a better understanding of the situation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I would move the recommendation of the city attorney at this time until it comes back to us again, unless there's some pressing thing that needs to take place at this time.
Could I get a response as to the pressing nature of this action?
There's really no pressing nature, only that, you know, the property owner has an interest in recovering his costs at some point in the future, but there's no immediate need today to approve the agreement.
Marcus, you think we might be able to hold a meeting sometime during the next month so that we could continue this to a date certain? Say, a month from now?
Sure, yeah, that would be possible.
And you think the timing would work on that?
Right. I would just, again, let the council know that we did have a public meeting that was sent registered mail to all the affected property owners to discuss exactly this issue, how the fees were established and how everything was divided up, and they did not attend.
Who, maybe, who's "they"?
The property owner that
Tonight?
Came today.
Okay.
Well, is it the pleasure of the council to defer this back to staff to bring back some additional information? Mr. Oden, is that your recommendation?
Yes.
Can I ask, for some degree of specificity, what direction you want the staff to investigate? How they can be exempted from this, how they be removed from it, how they be permitted to do the septic?
I think that once the city attorney's had an opportunity to look at and discuss with staff and perhaps get some direct input from the property owner's concern, that he'll be able to make the appropriate recommendation.
Recommend that we table this or continue this?
Continue, if we're going to come back with another
Concern about the public hearing aspects.
Marcus, it's probably not a big noticing issue on this, is there?
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Antina McKinney, and I represent the McKinney family in this case.
Can I ask you, excuse me?
Certainly.
Is it regarding issue 13?
Yes.
Because we have closed the public hearing on that.
Sorry. I just want to say that we are present.
Oh, I see. All right. Thank you.
Because just in case they ask who are present, yes or no?
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
As part of, I certainly don't have a problem with going back for a further review by staff based on what we found out tonight, but I'd like to be able to understand next time what other residential sites in town would have to have their sewer, essentially sewer ejecting system installed to get to the city sewer, where else in town that happens, and how many times that has been a requirement? Because that is a difficult system to deal with. And also, if we could have some kind of report on if that system has been required, or whether if it is to be required, this condition, what is the reliability of that system?
And I might suggest that my thinking is that if, through this meeting process, it turns out that there, that the property owner is making a good case that there should be an adjustment, what we would probably do then is there'd be a need to redo the public meeting. And so we probably then would end up not making the date that this continued to and have to renotice it.
Staff clear on council's request?
Mr. Mayor?
Ready.
If I might note to the council that, although there may appear to be issues here, I would just note that actually, the process is working as it should. I had a request to deal with an infrastructure situation that was complex because of topography, expensive infrastructure, came up with some creative ideas. We did what we needed to do with the meetings of the residents. Not everyone, obviously, can attend or make those meetings for many reasons. Then we have the public hearing here, and this is where we need to flush out the issue. So actually, this is good. Now that we know what the issues are, we can go back and address them and come back with what we think will be an acceptable plan for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Many times in day-to-day speech, we say things that just seem like they're appropriate, and I guess the concept of flushing out the issue seemed appropriate to this discussion. I, myself, did not think of it in that fashion, but I think we could all embrace what you're representing, sir. Council, okay with the idea of Mr. Ready's recommendation?
Yeah.
And we'll just continue this item until staff can bring it back with
Thank you.
... further direction? Do you want a formal action on that, a vote by any chance? Do you want to give direction as to how you want the hearing done?
Well, I think what you should do is either reopen and continue to a date certain or just table it, in which case we would definitely have to renotice it.
Table it. It's a small enough body of people I think to be noticed, and we appreciate both you coming down tonight. Let's table this, then, and ask staff to reconfigure some of the thinking and bring it back. Okay? Want a formal vote on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? This deemed unanimous. Thank you all for coming down tonight on this issue. I appreciate your input. Item 14 is Gran Viva del Monte Right-of-Way Vacation, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready again for his staff's report.
Thank you, members of council. This is one of those situations where, as all of you have seen, the improvements to Alejo and Indian Avenue North are now complete, that intersection. And again, this was done at the request, and council responded to issues of that neighborhood there in terms of traffic, et cetera. So this was all a good thing. The additional benefit was we have now more parking for the Palm Canyon Theater on Gran Viva del Monte. As a byproduct of that, what's before you this evening is a request for a vacation of the right-of-way, which also will benefit, then, obviously, the continued development on the side of the street where the Pepper Tree Inn is, which is being remodeled. So all of that wrapped up together is a good thing for the city, and we're asking your approval of the vacation of the right-of-way. If you have specific questions, Mr. Fuller can answer those. Thank you.
Very good. Council, before we open the public hearing, any questions on the staff report? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mills.
Marcus, how many additional parking spaces were gained? I'm asking the wrong guy or not?
No. It's, I think, 12, 11 or 12.
Okay. And then, do you recall, maybe Mr. Evans might be able to help you, but the additional spaces that were picked up at the Pepper Tree versus what it had originally? Because I know it's been a major improvement for the way their parking was set up, too, so...
That I don't know. I don't know what originally they had planned. They do pick up the 20, 22 feet of extra right-of-way.
Let's turn to Mr. Evans and see what he's got on. Mr. Evans?
Well, I think the main thing that allows them to do is to put their parking in in a much more efficient manner than before. I think the net gain of parking spaces is relatively nominal. I'd say it's probably five to seven. But what it really did was allowed them to put it in in a more functional way, actually have the driveways work, and create basically an in-and-out condition so that they have the ability to service the hotel. And if they're lucky enough in the future, build a restaurant, actually build a restaurant on the corner.
Thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item 14, Gran Via Valmonte Right-of-Way Vacation, please come forward at this time. Very good. Seeing no one. Let the record show there was no one for the public hearing, and we will close the public hearing. Turn to council for their action. Counsel, it's your pleasure.
I'll move the resolution.
Motion by Ms. Rose Spurgeon and second by Mr. Mills. Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges? Aye. Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rose Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Five-oh deemed unanimous. Now, we'll turn to council, comments, announcements, and interagency reports. Counsel, you've been away for a couple of weeks. I'm sure you've got a lot of backfilling to do here. Where have you been? What do you want to report out to this community? What's happening in the committees? Please take your time and inform us as to where you've been.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
I would, first of all, like to apologize for the cancellation of last week's meeting. I was one of the ones that was sick. The last four or five months, I've been having respiratory problems. And at this point in time, I feel much better when I am on oxygen than when I am not on oxygen. So, I have my little friend here with me, and you're going to see me around town with my little friend. And that's just the way it has to be right now until we figure out what's going on. So, accept it. I hope everything will be just fine, and we'll go on from there. Thanks.
Dana, for many of us, we're glad you're on oxygen because it means you'll be healthier and stronger, and we're glad you've told the community about that which you've been struggling with for so long. And we wish you the best health and hopefully speedy recovery.
It's going to be fine.
You bet. You bet. Other council comments, reports, interagency reports. Mr. Oden.
Mr. Mayor, I was out last week as well, but I announced it in advance that I had a meeting in Washington, D.C. And I came back with something where I feel like I need to borrow Dana's little green friend for here. I'd just like to say a special thank you to Nancy Stewart for bringing the reports that she brings to us from the Tramway Board. We've always had representatives there. We haven't always had reports, and I think it's just a very nice touch. So, thank you. I'd like to say a special welcome to Yellow Brick Productions, which is a new media group that's here in Palm Springs. I attended a fundraiser at the Annenberg Theater. It was a screening for a film called Friends and Family, which was quite exceptional. And I think it'll be showing very soon at Camelot Theater. I attended the grand opening of Tijeros del Pueblo, which is located right across the street from Palm Canyon Theater. That little plaza is just so very, very nice. You know, we have so many naysayers who like this and they don't like that, and, you know, why you have these colors and this architecture mixed with this. And you have to go. It's just a very, very nice place. I also attended a meeting before the Board of Supervisors representing as chairman of the Human Rights Commission. And in our report, basically, we focused on reports from two of our major programs. And one of them is our RIFCO IDA program, which is Riverside County Individual Development Account. And basically, we can assist people who are actually up to 200% of the poverty line. So, we had reports from two families. One was a young man who was attending college. He'd just married. His wife had a child, and they were able to purchase a home. Now, with these funds, you can... They can actually do one of three things: raise funds to start a small business, further their education, or use it as a down payment for a home. He put it as a down payment for a home. He was actually able to move into his home about a year earlier than he would have been able to do it previously and save some money. The other one was a woman who had previously been on welfare. She had eight children, and she was able to move into her first home, and it was just remarkable how she has changed her life. So, there really are those success stories out there. I also attended a program at Shelter From the Storm, when two members from our community, Pat Stearman and Marcella Valdez, made bears, teddy bears, for the children at Shelter From the Storm. And it was just a very nice presentation. And I attended the Good Samaritans for the Early Program on Sunday evening, where they honored Jim and Jackie Lee Houston. It was just an exceptional program for two exceptional people who do so much for our community. I'd just like to say a special congratulations to them. And this weekend, I've gone downtown different times, morning and evening. And it's interesting that our trash cans in certain parts of our downtown area are filled before 8 o'clock in the morning, which means then that the rest of the trash for the next few hours falls on the ground, and it looks terrible. And the area around a lot of those cans, really, they need to be cleaned. And I'm not sure if we need to perhaps talk with many of the merchants and get their support. I mean, I don't know how you continue to operate when you know you're serving people and your trash can is filled at 8 o'clock in the morning. To me, you dump it. But they aren't dumping them. So, you need to look at doing something to change that. I also stopped by the New Calora Restaurant. It's where Luis's Pantry used to be, and I had a lot of thoughts, second thoughts, about what that might look like. But it's actually turned out to be a very, very, very nice place. So, much success to them.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Other council comments or reports? I've got a little backup to do here. Been away for a couple of weeks. Back on November 13th, there was an interview from Palm Springs Life discussing the Film Festival, so I hope that plays well when it comes out in future articles. The Film Festival is always in the news, usually on the good side, and I hope the comments there were positive in that respect. Sunline, at the Sunline Taxi Cab Committee, had a peer review about eight years ago, and the intent was to review the quality of the cabs, the service, the nature of the services provided here to our hospitality industry. There is a peer review team that was brought in from a number of outside jurisdictions to review the quality of our cabs. Their initial finding is that the cab service here in the Coachella Valley is very good, very high quality. They will make a number of recommendations to find ways in which we can improve it, for the most part on first blush. They are very pleased with what they saw initially. I attended an AIA, American Institute of Architects, conference on two occasions. On November 15th, Friday, Hughle Hauser was, in fact, the keynote speaker for one of their opening ceremonies and made a number of references to Palm Springs and the work that's going on here with regards to our modernist movement and so on and so forth. He was very well-received. And then I joined a panel discussion on Saturday morning to discuss government's role in quality design and how we can facilitate quality design from architects. It was an interesting dialogue, having to wear both hats, if you will, professionally as an architect and from the government's standpoint. On that same day, there was a Walk of Stars for some people that are long past us here in Palm Springs, Fred and Maisabel Markham, and they were the founders of the Smoke Tree Ranch. And their daughters and granddaughters were all there. Aunts and uncles, family members came to prepare the Walk of Stars. There are so many people that were significant in the formation of this great city, and it's nice to see them get recognized. On the 18th, I had a meeting with a number of people, one of which is Jim Dunn from our convention center and some of his staff, and some local representatives. Recall, if you will, that we were back in Washington some weeks back, month and a half ago, and met with a number of organizations. There are already fruits being born from that visit. We are working aggressively to see if we can't bring a fairly large... I wouldn't say it's an exceptionally large, but a fairly large piece of business into Palm Springs. We have an opportunity scheduled on December 8th for a number of meetings, dinners, and whirlwind tours. I have committed that Sunday for the purposes of trying to secure that. And then we have another second chance in January if we do well. It was reported to us that we are in the final running. We are competing with only one city, a small one. They have a pretty good chance, but they haven't got much to offer. Oh, wait, it's New York City. So, basically, on the results of the trip that Mr. Dunn put together for us, we have at least secured the eyes and ears of one organization to consider us as a viable site as opposed to New York. So, we'll do well there, I hope. And if all comes in, we'll have Mr. Dunn make the formal announcement at that time. Oddly enough, at the CVA, the Convention and Visitor Authority meeting on the 19th, a number of discussions were had about, obviously, the budget and marketing and so on and so forth. In reviewing the budget, I only made one comment, and that was the funds that are made available in our annual budget at CVA that can be used to help market and sell all of these new air carriers and sites that we've worked so hard through Mr. Smoots and Mr. Strickland's work over at the airport. We have a number of new carriers, as you know, destinations and ports. And if we do not have enough money adequately set aside in our CVA budget, it's going to be difficult to commit dollars to help fill those seats, and we might lose it. I tried with little result to get anyone to join me in an attempt to raise the amount allocated for the year, but it was leased on record, and there was a concession that if we needed more, we could, of course, shift money later on. I would have preferred to have the money earmarked and set aside so that we know, the airport knows, CVA knows, and those in the convention business know that we have money to market the right flights and the right carriers. But with that being said, another part of business was revealed to us, convention work is very competitive. And two eye-opening comments were made at the CVA. The first one was that there's a new convention center opening somewhere in the south that is so desperate for work that they have offered a $50,000 signing bonus if you come to their convention. And a second bit of interesting news was there is a fairly large city in Nevada that has an incredible budget for advertising and marketing and has tremendously marketed the large-scale conventions. They have actually turned to existing conventions that have already signed in other jurisdictions and approached those people and said, "How much is your cancellation fee? We will pay it if you bring your convention to our city." And this is becoming more frequent and more aggressive, and it becomes a little bit more difficult for us to play that game. We don't have money for signing bonuses, and we can't buy cancellations. In keeping up with Mr. Dunn on a number of other fronts that are represented already in my comments, he and I are working on, along with some other members of the team that he has, concepts that perhaps we can bring forward to you, that we can offer things that are not necessarily monetary, but keep us competitive in his difficult job of bringing his conventions two, three, four, five years out. So, Mr. Dunn is trying to put together some ideas, and we're working with some pretty creative thoughts, and hopefully, they'll all come through, and we can bring them to your attention. On that same day on the 19th, Mr. Oden joined me at a luncheon hosted by the Economic Development Corporation and our own economic development team here in City Palm Springs, and we opened a new industrial airport spec building. It was very... For me, it was very rewarding to see a big empty box that's available. If you have been seeing the emails that come in from CVEP, the Coachella Valley Economic Partnership, there's always requests for buildings now, not can you find me a piece of dirt, get me a developer, build me a building, build it to my specs, and then I'll take it in two years. They want it now. So, we had been asking, in fact, to recall the comments we made during the study session with EDC and John Stiles, has the market turned to a point where we can build buildings? Are there enough calls? Is it right? Well, we no sooner asked that question than we opened up a building for that purposes, and we'll see how well we move. But the building represented a fairly good size by our standards, but in the world of big boxes, it's not. It's rewarding, and we'll see where it takes us, but hopefully, we'll continue to expand our opportunity to bring in new economics. Additionally, we have secured a conference for May of 2000. We were honored to receive the Clean Cities Conference, the ninth annual one, which is the national conference. And we've all been big supporters of alternate fuel vehicles and clean vehicles and such. This is the mother of all conventions in that arena. And again, Mr. Dunn and his team are working to find ways in which we can give signature to not just the whole conference, but even components of it. So, in trying to work that one up, we're trying to make sure that when they leave here after our conference, they go, "Now, that was an exceptional experience." And then next year, they look back and say, "Can we go back to Palm Springs soon?" Because they really were making it special. Recall, if you will, AOPA, we do that parade of planes, unlike anyone else does. And that, although not that alone, has kept us clearly in the center of their opinion as to where they should go, and they've continued to come back. So, we're going to try to work up new ways in which we can bring it. Mr. Mills and I had a luncheon meeting with Corky Larson from CVA to try to figure out how we can get a little bit of relaxation on some of the issues regarding the conservation plan, the multi-species plan. And we got some pretty good insights, and we'll share that through staff's recommendations, and hopefully, they can get into a staff report as to how we might be able to loosen up some of the restrictions that we've got on some of our development standards. But hopefully, that will work out. On the 21st, I joined Mitch Levine, who is the executive director of the Nortel Palm Springs International Film Festival. And he and I drove into Los Angeles, and we had the distinct pleasure of being guests at the Consulate General's Luncheon. All the Consulate General offices in Los Angeles meet monthly at a luncheon to discuss issues, and we were actually afforded the opportunity to present the Film Festival. So, Mitch came with flyers and handouts, and we were pleasantly surprised to find out that a number of the Consul generals were already coming, had already booked their reservations, had helped secure films to come here. Many were considering doing receptions. Others had already booked their receptions. You know, many of the nationalities do their conventions, their receptions. So, we thought the event, although it was about an hour and a half, two hours, was very successful. It did consume the entire day, but I think it was of great benefit. We have managed to develop a fairly good rapport with the Consul General Corps. Many of them are aware of our interest in securing a greater presence at the Film Festival, the interest in helping to secure tourism on an international level and some economics. And some of them actually discussed with me some ideas of doing some cultural things that could be involved in some cultural events here that would bring us some international attention also. And then that night, recall, if you will, the Smoke Tree Jewelers, which was robbed some time back, they had their opening. They finally reopened, and I managed to get there, although not at 4 o'clock, stuck in L.A. traffic. I got there at 5, and Mr. Mills joined us at 5:30, and they are very pleased to be back and operational. If you get a chance to go shopping, see if you can swing by that little jewelry store and say hello to them because they've been strong supporters of Palm Springs for quite some time. And then this past week, somehow, somebody I know found that there is a gentleman who actually broadcasts live from the Coachella Valley to St. Louis. And this gentleman, who I know, arranged for me to meet with this man, and he actually broadcast out of his home. He has some sort of electronic wizardry, and it's as if you're in a studio, and for the most part, it was a studio in his office in his home. And we had a little exchange about Palm Springs and what we are and so on. So, we got some radio play into St. Louis. And he was very intrigued by it and had asked if, in fact, he doesn't live here, he visits here, but when he's here, he does his show, and he'd like very much to continue if we can bring him celebrities and things of that nature to help promote Palm Springs. So, yet and still, a new, to my knowledge, unknown, undiscovered avenue of access at no cost to the city that can get us into the ears, at least, of St. Louis. And I'm going to try to use that as best I can. I did represent that maybe during the Film Festival, we might be able to get some of the celebrities, the stars, the promoters, something, get him to engage, do an on... Something. It might be able to work for us. Today, I joined our fire department and our police department at the annual Peace Officer and Public Safety Appreciation Day Awards Luncheon, sixth annual. And as you know from last year's reports, the entire valley is acknowledging the great work of these individuals who protect us and provide us the safety we need. Palm Springs did well. I think, chief, we got three awards this year. I think we got... I'm checking my thing here. Sergeant Dan Rose from our Palm Springs got the Narcotic Enforcement Team Member Award, and Officer Nelson Figueroa got the Coachella Valley Medal of Valor for law enforcement, and I believe the volunteer... Valley Medal of Valor for law enforcement, and I believe the Volunteer Program of the Year was awarded to our citizens on patrol. So we walked away with three of those, and it was... Yeah, I agree. I agree. It was very well attended. It's one of the safest places to have lunch in the valley, if not America, because most of the guys there are packing guns, and they're on your side. And it's a great, actually, a great luncheon, and there's a lot of incredible stories of heroism and bravery that obviously have earned these awards, so that worked out very well. And then this afternoon, the holiday banners are up, and Joey Meredith from Main Street did the award ceremony for the banners, and all the kids came out and got their awards. And there are still cities in Southern California that want to buy last year's banners because they can't get that program off the ground where they live, unfortunately. Now, for the future tomorrow, I'd like to invite anyone who is listening to come join all of us at four o'clock on the roof deck of the new parking structure at Indian and Baristo. At four o'clock, we will have the official parking structure dedication, and then up on the rooftop, we're going to have, it's not exactly a Thanksgiving dinner, but we'll have some food and some fun, so if you want to come, join us. And then on a personal note, my oldest son, Will, secured the lead role in the high school play, Neil Simon's Rumors. They're performing, I think, as we speak, and tomorrow night is the last performance, and I'll be able to join him. I went to two of them, and I went as a supportive father, thinking I'll watch my son perform. And much to my surprise and delight, it was an outstanding show. Neil Simon is an incredible writer, but you need a talented cast to convey his great work, and it was very well done. I went back a second night and brought a group of friends over. Mr. Mills joined me at one of the sessions, and it was, unfortunately, it was not well attended, as many high school plays aren't, but it was extraordinary. I mean, it is quick wit, funny, sarcastic, very animated, very well done, especially for a high school level. It was my son's first appearance on stage. I dare say not his last, based on his success. And if you love Palm Springs High School, they are in the final play on Friday night for the football game. So if you can get away Friday night, join us. And that's it. That's all I got. Beyond that, on behalf of all the council, happy Thanksgiving. How's that? So I only have a long report because we've been gone for two weeks. I'm sorry. A little busy.
Mr. Mayor.
That's not the expanded version. I'm sorry, Mr. Mills, we're completely out of time.
Come on.
All right, go ahead, sir.
That I don't doubt. For, I was just wondering where we're supposed to park tomorrow for the opening of the parking structure.
In the parking structure.
All right. Okay.
Are we wearing our jackets tomorrow? What are we doing tomorrow? Anything special?
Mine doesn't fit, so...
All right, then we're not wearing our jackets. Is there a color theme?
Black and white.
Black and white? Finish checkerboard. All right, I'll work on the checkerboard theme. Black and white I can do. Checkerboard.
Black, white, and blue.
Uh-uh. Black and white, that's what we got. We got it from our PIL. Guess we're going black and white. Everyone's pondering what's in the closet and what's clean. Any other reports at this time? Otherwise, we'll go to our legislative calendar. And item fifteen is the convention center expansion phase number one, and I'll turn to Mr. Ready for his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is the first shot across the bow of the new expanded convention center. This is in agreement with Mike Fontana, and we are asking you to approve. As you will know, Mike Fontana of previous fame, or will be of fame tomorrow when we dedicate the parking structure, he was the lead for us on the parking structure. We're asking your approval to move him to help us with the convention center. This will be phase one. I would like Mr. Smoot, director of the airports, and he's been involved in these projects, to tell you the specific duties that Mr. Fontana will do. And then with that, I believe Mr. Alshire may have a note, and then on the contract, and then we'll proceed. Thank you.
Mr. Smoot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As Mr. Ready reports, this is a professional services contract with a couple of minor modifications that would move Mr. Fontana, who's finishing up the parking structure, over to the first phase of the convention center to do the same basic functions, which is to be our person on the ground that is, quite frankly, our bulldog to keep things moving. I think the demonstration of the parking structure being completed ahead of time by a day and within the budget is a good example of his work. The agreement that we do have does have a couple of changes from the standard form dealing with the insurance areas and the indemnification clauses. This particular contract would be for a five-month period of time and would cost $57,500 during that period of time, and the dollars would come from the convention center funding that we have set aside. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. And I suggest to you, sir, that it's better to be a day earlier than a day late.
Darn right.
Darn right. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I have a question.
Please.
I just need greater detail that this agreement has been modified from the standard form, that whole line there. What does that mean?
The, you know, our normal form agreement obviously has fairly extensive insurance and indemnification provisions, and sometimes service providers who are very small shops have some difficulty through their normal insurance agents with obtaining the amount of insurance and be able to comply with the indemnification provision in our full form. And when that occurs, you know, you've given me latitude to approve minor modifications, et cetera, but whenever we approve something different than our standard, we like to make sure the council is aware of it. This is an issue that, again, small operators can have problems and concerns with. The sum of, it appeared probably a month ago that we had major problems in working out indemnification clause. The language was really quite unsatisfactory, but over the last month, the differences have narrowed. It's still not quite our form agreement, but I think it largely gets us there, but we just wanted to make the council aware it was somewhat different than the norm.
And yet, you're comfortable with that, Mr. Alshire?
Well, I think, again, the majority of the problem we had, we've worked out. You know, we have language that in the normal form, it's a longer provision. It says that in terms of the indemnification, they'll defend any litigation, they will pay any judgment. You know, that language has been deleted. It's, I think it is still implied, and it's just, one of the issues you do get into is the fact that a, if we did have a claim out there with the resources the city has to defend that type of litigation, it's probably more extensive than Mr. Fontana's resources. And in all likelihood, you'd probably want the city attorney to defend it instead of Mr. Fontana and his resources anyway. So I think it's acceptable, but it's, it is, if we had a larger organization, we'd probably have a more complete clause.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I certainly support Mr. Fontana. I think he's done a phenomenal job for us. My question to you, Mr. Alshire, should this come back to us at some time in form, I can say to you that you said it was okay? You're comfortable with that?
It's not the standard that I would like to have, given your, given the services that Mr. Fontana provides, and after many months of discussion, the fact that if you required the normal, I do not think he would be available to do this work. If it's important to the city to have him do the work as opposed to somebody else, then you need to compromise your standard, and I think that this largely protects you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ready.
If I could to, to help answer Councilman Oden's question. The city attorney has, obviously, he has gone where he needs to go at a higher level, responding to a policy interest we have is to get the project done. He has, I think, found a middle ground on this contract that he can be somewhat comfortable with, but I would just like to let you know that as an added safety measure, safety valve, fallback position, what we have is Al Smoot from our staff, which comes with all the incumbent provisions and protections and things that we need done, is, in fact, the superintendent of the project. So in theory, Mr. Fontana is not the final decision-maker on many of these questions. Mr. Smoot will be involved. That, in theory, lends us an additional layer of protection from our side of the fence. And again, it becomes a risk-benefit calculus, and we think the benefit far outweighs the risk.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Having, having seen the portion of the contract that's in question, the portion of the agreement, the area in question that this would be, and I think what the city manager was alluding to is that Mr. Fontana is not in a position to do engineering, to do architecture, to make decisions on his own. He's simply an expediter, watches over the project, right, like a foreman for the city, more like a representative for the city. He's not, I don't see him being involved in decision-making, in the decision-making process that would cause the type of litigation, I think, that the city attorney is, or that, not the city attorney, but that clause eludes to. Also, as a, as an architect and reading that little line in there, I'm surprised you get any small firms to take any city work. And I think that if you do get a small firm that takes that, takes city work with that line in there, then they're thinking, number one, nothing is going to happen, and number two, if they do, the city's going to end up being on the line anyway. And I think that's what Mr. Alshire was alluding to. It's just not a clause that's made to favor doing business with a small outfit. Plain and simple. And if the city would like to continue to encourage smaller contractors, maybe local contractors, to get involved in city work, then I think we may want to look at an adjustment in the way the wording occurs and that. But I am, I'm comfortable, particularly in the role that Mr. Fontana has with this particular contract, that the liability issue, as far as the city's concerned, is not, is not a problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
I certainly appreciate what you're saying and have thought about this, and I've known Mike Fontana for a long time. I remember when he did the hospital parking structure. And he is invested in this community. He lives here, and I don't think that the parking structure would be done tomorrow if it were not Mike Fontana and Mr. Smoot pushing the gun here. And I think it's because of their involvement that we've been successful in getting this done, and I want the same involvement and the same final project success with the convention center, so I'm okay with this.
I think if we're trying to encourage, obviously, local participation of businesses in our city projects, and Mr. Mills kind of touched on it, and we've had this discussion in the past, sometimes we write things in such a restrictive fashion that nobody locally can do it, so you're almost forced to go outside of bigger houses that aren't here, and then we try to wonder why our local businesses don't get any business from it and so on and so forth. So maybe, maybe we're seeing once again that circle going around. I think one of the most important things, and Ron touched on it, are we okay? Are we protecting? That's our job first, to protect the city of Palm Springs, and that's why I asked, "Are you okay with this?" Now, granted, it's not the hard line you draw. You can move a little bit, and I appreciate if that latitude can be, come from your offices, because the council has to be somewhat flexible at times, too. If you can embrace that with us, I think we're all pretty comfortable. Mr. Fontana has proven himself on this most recent project. Although he alone didn't do it, it's a tremendous team, and what I would like to do is keep whatever that team is together on this project and the next project and all the projects, because if you can get that guaranteed result, which is on time and on budget, I want those people around me as long as we can keep them, with obviously reasonable costs involved. But he's a proven professional, and he did an extraordinary job. And I looked at the back here when I talked about payments under Exhibit B. "The consultant shall work a minimum of 120 hours per month." Well, I don't know about you guys, but I don't think Mike came close to a 40-hour work week once. I bet you he was 60s and 70 hours and working late trying to do the paperwork just to make sure our project was on timeline schedule. So he's committed to the city, and I think with that, he can obviously feel, I think we can feel comfortable knowing that he is a professional in that respect. What is the council's pleasure with this?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I certainly agree that Mike has done a great job with the parking structure, and we probably would not be going in if it weren't for his efforts. Certainly, I agree that there were more people involved. I also agree with what Chris's recommendation, that if we want to establish a policy to encourage small businesses to work with us, I think that's fine. But what I don't want to see is one person gets to do that and not another person. So I would like to see a policy so that it doesn't become preferential treatment for one and not for small businesses across the board.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ready.
Councilman Oden raises a very good point, and I can tell the council that indeed a policy is needed, required, and will come, become in your way, because many small businesses, many nonprofits are in a separate category where the risk is different, their abilities are different, and we would be willing, for policy reasons, to go forward. City attorney is doing everything he should do. He's giving us the highest level. What we are going to do is, we're going to sit down with the attorney. This is just timely now to have before you early next year a tiered approach of contracts that city council can agree on. Thank you. And if I might add, Mr. Mayor and to members of council, if in fact you approve this contract before you, prior, you had approved a contract in a form acceptable to a city attorney with the original contract with Mr. Fontana. I would insert the same language in that contract as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Counsel, if it is your pleasure to take action on the minute order, I recommend that we change the date on the minute order to represent the date of tonight's meeting, the 26th. Now, what's the council's pleasure?
I'll move the minute order.
Second. I'm Mr. Rella Spurgeon, and a second by Mr. Mills, and I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Oden.
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Five oh, it's deemed unanimous. Item sixteen is the convention center expansion phase two, and we'll turn to Mr. Ready for... Oh, sorry. It looks as though we have a slight break, and we'll take ten-minute recess and come right back. No, no, let's take the break. I think we could all use it. Thank you.[1667.69]
Thank you.[467.71]
Clearly, a building that is individual. It is a piece of architecture for Palm Springs. So I'm very pleased with the recommendation.
I have a question if I may, Mr. Mayor. When we talked about the master plan in study session, has there been a decision as to which direction this is going?
Northeast, south or west?
Yes.
I don't think we've formally taken action.
The, actually, that decision is going to have to follow up in earnest, probably within the next thirty days because, in essence, the architect is going to have to design the building on a site and the structure needs to fit that site. So that decision will be, have to be made in the very near future. You will see that on an agenda as we move through December.
Each of the architectural firms that came to the interview, five were, where's Harold? Five were invited, four could make it. The fifth one could not make it based on a number of criteria problems they had. Each of them were charged with the task of analyzing Scheme Three, which is the one to go to the north, and what was the benefits and the problems and otherwise. It's not as though we said, "This is the solution." But analyze this, tell us what's right or wrong, what kind of recommendations would you make and so on and so forth. So they looked in that direction. There's been no decision nor is the action tonight indicative of a direction that we're going in. It is simply the firm that has been chosen to guide us in whatever direction the council says to go in. So that site selection stuff is not established at this juncture.
Well, I guess the question is, in terms of the work program, if it's on the plate that going towards the Suet property is one of the possibilities and there may be conflict and/or 10-90 issues which...
This discussion tonight, Mr. Alshire, does not discuss anything to do with site planning nor direction of growth. It is simply the architectural team. That's all it is. This is not in any way directed in any one way, regardless of what direction ultimately the council goes in.
Well, there isn't a work program for the architect?
This is just selecting it at this point and we'll bring back a contract at a later date. This is just actually saying of the four firms, staff, go negotiate a contract with Ventress Brown. So we don't actually have a complete work program and part of their work will be to take that master plan and say, "Okay, here's what we think the best alternative is."
Well, if there's some possibility as a... I mean, I'm just, I have an abundance of caution. Again, the issue is potentially that the... Some possibility should be excluded and not on the table to be sure that there's not a problem created.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden. Perhaps we should say then, whether there is a site or not, we should eliminate certain properties. There's no need in them wasting their time.
The action tonight doesn't discuss the site. There's nothing in the report that discusses the site.
If they are going to analyze something, they need to know what's a part of that equation and we're saying that there are certain properties that are not a part of that equation.
In other words, what I'm hearing that it's not intended that they analyze an option going...
In that direction.
Right.
That's correct.
Well, I think, I think the action, as I view it, having said on the other side, is that this is purely to negotiate a contract of which the program is not even finalized at this point. We have a suggested program and it's, this is fairly standard and it's part of the, what the architect will be involved in determining what that program is as well as what the, what master plan issue gets taken or gets established. But this in no way is suggesting any particular master plan or any specifics at this time.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I understand that. What we're saying is, if they are going to make a determination about analyzing potentially where it can go, there are certain areas that should not be looked at. So they need to know that. Otherwise, they're wasting their time and our money.
I can agree with that in concept, but the action before you tonight is not to give direction in any way as to where to analyze.
But you did say that this, in this process, in this preliminary process, that they are analyzing. Are they or are they not?
In the initial representation that they made in the interview process, they were instructed, sort of to give us an idea of their skills, "Look at Scheme Three and tell us what you think. Flaws, accents, changes, benefits, drawbacks."
Only Scheme Three?
Only Scheme Three.
So that says that that's all they're looking at?
That's all they looked at. That's all they saw.
Okay. Then that would be...
And they were not directed. That's even the way we're going. We don't know, and we told them, we don't know what direction it's going in.
Okay, but we looked at several schemes. You didn't say that they were limited to only look at one. You said to analyze everything. We need to make sure that they are not looking at everything. If they're only looking at three, then that's okay.
I'm going to have Harold explain to you the process of what they went through and what they...
And what I'm saying is, perhaps we should take a break on this point. Recession.
I don't concur with that. Mr. Good.
The process is a process for selecting professional services that, as Councilman Mills says, is well established under state code and indeed the federal code mirrors it also. It's a qualifications-based process. What we basically said is we need to select someone that whatever we do, this is the form we're going to work with. And so it was strictly to choose someone that had the creativity to do a design and the operate, and design around their operational functions. And we simply selected a firm to work with us to do that. The only thing that any of the firms saw, other than the firm that did the master plan, was Scheme Three. And we didn't even discuss any of the others. You know, so... I mean, it was very, very strictly limited to just the qualifications. We need to select someone we're going to work with and let's get that out of the way. And then the anticipation was that somewhere down the road, a decision would be made about whether that scheme is the final one or not.
And if I could just add, what I'm going to be directing this individual to do, as far as I know, is it has to be on land that we own, which is either going north or their current footprint, unless City Council tells me otherwise. Unless City Council tells me to explore other possibilities. And I have not had that direction at this point. So it's on land that we currently own. It would be my charge.
Okay.
And within, if I could, Mayor, then within land that we own, obviously, there's the north or the current footprint. And so I presume that's, those are the two possibilities that would be coming back to you. And again, unless I'm directed otherwise.
Okay. You got a motion and a second.
I'm going to withdraw my second at this point. I'm not sure. I feel very uncomfortable. I am not one of the ones that has a potential conflict, so I can go ahead and vote on this. But I just want to make sure that the process is okay so that we don't get into a situation that a month down the road, we have to go through this whole process again. I don't know. Mr. Alshire does not look terribly comfortable sitting there. And I... Mr. Smoot is...
May I suggest that in the process we would go through, if you selected Ventress Brown tonight, Harold and I will sit down with them and talk to them. And the first work item that they will have will be to take the City Council's selected alternative, which you have not done yet, and further analyze that and start designing the building. Our timeframe, in order to really make this thing happen, in order to get it open by Christmas of 2004, is we need to have a contract back on your council agenda, December 18th. And we also need to have the selection of the alternative on December 18th. So that at that point, they have a contract and the next day they start working. The contract will not say you are to work on alternative X, Y, or Z. It'll just say you're going to work on the City Council's selected alternative once the council selects it. So there's no predetermination that they're going to look at any one spot at all. It's just that they're going to look at whatever you tell them as a council to look at. And this will allow the process to keep moving, but will not predetermine any spot or eliminate any spot until you actually do it. All the contract will say is, you will, as a first job architect, analyze the selected alternative and tell us how best to use it. But the council will have to select that before they can actually do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
That sounds good to me. But I'm not an attorney and I'd just like to hear from legal if that's... Acceptable.
Some of the statements I have heard tonight make me feel better. Some of them make me feel worse. I've, there's, in terms of what the legal issues are, that we've heard things that are on both sides of this.
Well, let's do this then. I'm going to take Mr. Oden's consideration to heart and let's take a recess, go into a brief executive session and get briefing from legal on this issue and get some clarification done in the proper chamber. Is that possible?
We can't have a closed session on the selection of an architect. You can have closed session on real property negotiations. Well, the only, the question is, what property are we negotiating over?
Well, if somehow Mr. Mills and I abstain and allow the vote to go forward to keep the schedule in place and get resolution after the fact, I'm concerned that every time we delay this, and we lost last week, you know, two weeks behind schedule and time is of the essence on this project. Every day we don't get it built is a day he can't book. And he hasn't got a body in that box. We haven't got bodies and beds and we're losing revenue. So if it means that I have to abstain to move this vote forward, I will clearly abstain to get clarification. But I would not want to jeopardize this project from moving forward.
The three members could approve this contract and I, Councilmember Spurgeon raised this. There is a potential issue that obviously is not clear at this point in time and...
And I like to emphasize, this is not clear. And in order to keep this project moving, for the purposes of that and that alone, I will abstain on this issue and pass Gavildham Pro Tem.
Okay. Mr. Mills, you made the motion, didn't you?
Yeah, and you know, there's no doubt in my mind what we're voting on here. And we're not voting on anything to do with anything that is a conflict. And, but for the same reasons that the mayor is abstaining, I will abstain as well. But I think, you know, this issue has been on the agenda now a week longer than it should have been and this should have been taken care of before now. And I'm extremely upset that we're sitting here and having to go through this little exercise now when everybody sitting over there knows what this condition was and we should have been advised. But I will abstain and withdraw my motion.
I'll move the minute order. Madam Mayor? Yes. I'm concerned with the process here. Do we have a problem with the process now too? I mean, our subcommittee are the two that are abstaining. And if everything is fine, I'll be happy to vote for it. I'm not looking to delay this any further. But I'm just curious as to whether the process that has been taken is proper. And if nobody can answer that, then I won't vote for it.
Well, I'm not quite sure what the process is. So I don't, has been. I haven't been involved with it. In terms of the interviews of the architect, I don't even know who participated in those interviews. But I do believe that three, that the three members of the council, there's no problem with their voting on this. None of the three of you have even any argument. And obviously, I'm not saying the other two necessarily do, but there is at least a potential question. The other three do not have a conflict. So I don't think that the three of you have a problem in voting on it.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, and maybe this will give some clarification on the process. It was important that a council subcommittee be part of this process because it was an important decision on the architect. We asked council for a subcommittee. City Council appointed a subcommittee. There was no discussion in these interviews of any design on any piece of parcel or property that we did not own, which in essence would effectively remove the, whatever issue property there was. If that helps clarify.
One other thing I'd just like to add. If you subtracted the votes of the council subcommittee, the result and recommendation would be the same. Just reporting that back on behalf of the committee.
I appreciate that, I really do. I think that there has been notice, though, of this potential conflict. And again, it's a potential conflict, not necessarily a conflict at this point. And it just is interesting to me why that subcommittee, which was appointed months ago, was the one who would be involved in this process with that potential conflict hanging over their head. Now, I could be wrong and if the city attorney says we don't have a problem, I'll be more than happy to vote on this. I just don't want it to come back at us.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think everyone would like to see the Convention Center project move forward. We supported it. So if there's any delay, it's not intentional to sabotage the project. We supported it. We've come to a situation where we have to make a decision that is a little complicated.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Oden. If I could suggest, we can't go into executive session to discuss this with the attorney, but if we wanted to take a recess, the city attorney could address some of these issues with staff and then we could come back in a few minutes and give you a recommendation.
That would be fine. Is that okay? Yeah, I want to deal with this. So we just need to recess for five minutes? Okay. Riz?
All right, we're ready, Madam Mayor, we're ready to go with this conceptually.
Okay.
We have two comments. Al Smoot is going to clarify what we will be requesting and then David Alshire will give his comment on our request. Al?
Thank you, Mr. Ready. Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you, I need to clarify. I may have misspoken. The issue that is before you tonight is that we are asking you to select an architect. The architect will then work on a contract with us that will be very explicit and in that contract. Staff's recommendation is that no consideration be given to any property other than that which is currently owned by the city because to do other than that would cause delays because of increased cost, possibility of dealing with tribal issues and other things. And therefore, we recommend that you select this architect with instructions that the work will only be done on city property.
And my comment is, and again, you know, Harold, in his comments when he got up, he said Option Three was the option that the architects were told about. It's the only one that they really talked about and focused on. And it's just kind of the way the whole discussion had occurred. There were several different statements made. But in talking to Al about what was really intended, this is what Al explained to me. And I think under that, that there's no option to go into the east. This is the option we're looking at. And under that consideration, probably nobody has a conflict. But given kind of what we're at in the discussion, it's probably still safer that just the three members participate. But I think at that point in time, when we enter into a contract that specifies that this architect is only going to be looking at those kinds of options, I don't believe any council members would have a conflict in any further evaluation discussion, et cetera, concerning that architectural project.
Okay, thank you. I'll move the minute order. I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Abstain.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Abstain. Here's where the minute order passes, 302. Item 17 is the 1992 Airport refund bond refinancing for 2002-2003 fiscal year budget amendment. Mr. Ready, your staff report, please.
Members of council, this request is to approve the agreement with the financial consultant on potentially refinancing our airport bonds. The reason is twofold. One, we stand to save significant money with a better interest rate. That's potential. Second of all, we have an interest in removing, in removing the covenants that were in the old bonds. Covenants in the old bonds excluded the PFC passenger charge. We would like that removed. And Mr. Smoot can answer specific questions for you if you have them. We strongly recommend your approval. Thank you.
Mr. Ready. Council, questions on staff report?
I'll move the minute order.
And resolution?
Yes.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rella Spurgeon and seconded by Mr. Oden. I only ask that on page 17A3, under Exhibit A, Item Three, and A be added to capital under the Airport Capital Improvement Program. There's a motion for approval by Ms. Spurgeon and seconded by Mr. Oden. Any further discussions or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Ross Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. 5-0 deemed unanimous. Item 18 is 2002-2003 allocated position and compensation plan. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Actually, this is a very exciting thing before you and I have to tell you, I'm very excited to ask you for this request. What this stems from is our city traffic signals are synchronized, becoming synchronized, and we will have permissive left turns. You see lights flashing all over the city because they're being repaired and upgraded with the loops. Now, to get there, to get there, we need to have the technical capacity to make sure these lights are working and functioning well. We had a particular problem insofar as that we didn't have the capability. A particular individual had vacated the position, which meant we could do one of two things. Contract out for this service or keep it in-house and bring in the capacity and change the position which you see before you. I ask this to do two things. One, we are eliminating the original position, replacing it with this position. The cost difference will be, depending upon the individual hired, and the levels between $6,000 and $10,000 annually per year. The benefit we receive from this is twofold. One, it allows us to maintain our traffic signals in a better condition. And two, I believe ultimately, it will be a better cost benefit and cost investment than having an outside contractor. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Ready, council questions? Mr. Oden?
You're saying $6,000 to $10,000 more?
Annually than we pay now. And the reason for that is the position that we have now does not have the technical capacity to keep these lights maintained. And that is in large part why the traffic signals were always out of sync. So this is a very important component to keeping them in sync.
Is it possible to hire this person in the current position until we have a budget review?
What we're doing now is we have a vacancy there and we're borrowing electricians from, actually, another department to help fill in. But we also have a contract. We have a company under contract to help us through this position because the position is vacant.
So you want to hire someone?
Yes, I would, yes.
Can you hire them in this, in the same position until we do a budget review?
No.
It's took half a year into it.
Because I, well, actually, we can with the same amount of money because that position is empty. So the answer to your question is yes. This year, it won't cost us anymore. But of course, next year, it would be... The alternative would be, we could certainly hire the person, and it would be covered under the curtain, current line on him. Or in the alternative, we could hire a contract, contractor to do this on an as-needed basis, if you wanted to do, go that route, and then reconsider keeping a contract or next year filling this position.
Well, I think if you want to, to me, if you wanted to hire the person, I just don't want to do a budget increase until we have an opportunity to look at it again.
Well, the actual budget increase would occur next budget year.
But technically, we'd be doing it now if we know we're going to incur that cost.
Correct. Technically, you would. Absolutely. Our eyes wide open. But I do believe that the benefit is substantial and benefits every citizen and visitor in this community.
I'm okay with staff's recommendation. I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, it may give council a comfort level. I fully intend to bring to you a, a budget recommendation, and as we're going to get into that process in the next few months, I'm very sensitive of where I need to be, and you will see reflected various positions and modifications that will get us within budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
And I guess it really isn't directly to the issue, but I'd certainly like to see a budget review before the next few months.
Actually, I was speaking, yeah, and there's no question, you will see budget review. I was talking about the actual budget that we present next year.
I think we're scheduled for quarterly reviews.
Yes.
To get back on that schedule.
So...
So we can keep things in check in that respect.
Yeah.
Very good. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. You want a roll call? Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Oden?
Aye.
Ms. Rella Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes 4-1. Item 19 is the city investment policy. Is there much of a staff report on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would defer to the city treasurer.
Thank you. Mr. Kinnar?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the city's investment policy. State law requires us to have it reviewed at a public meeting at least once a year. It's the same policy as we have in place last year. That one's working, and I see no reason to change it. We recommend its approval.
Very good. Counsel, it's a pleasure.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion for approval on Ms. Hodges and seconded by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 5-0 deemed unanimous. Item 20 is an added starter. It was added, I'm sorry, it's a supplemental agenda. This is a tolling agreement with Eldorado. I need point of clarification on the cover sheet. It says terminated in October 23rd, 2003. All right, that's, it's a year. Good, okay. Staff report, please.
Mr. City Attorney, please, thank you.
In the Eldorado litigation, the parties have entered into some discussion to try and defer current litigation expense. Per son of the tolling agreement, it's, Eldorado is going to go through the conversion process, and there's basically an agreement that instead of spending any more money on litigation, we'll let them go through that conversion process. And if we end up with a true conversion, the litigation will go away, and the owner will give up their claim for damages against the city. So a tolling agreement keeps everything on hold while they go through and try and complete the conversion process.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alshire. Counsel, questions or comments? Requiring counsel action?
I'll move the minute order. Second.
Motion for approval on Ms. Hodges and a seconded by Ms. Rella Spurgeon. Any additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please, Mr. Oden.
Who was monitoring the process?
The residents are certainly affected by the process, and history suggests to me if something's occurring that they're not happy with, we will probably hear about it.
So we could expect to hear from them? Okay.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Why does all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's 5-0. Mr. Ready, any additional starters at this time, sir?
Mr. Mayor, no additional added starters, but if I could ask permission to go back to number 18 for a comment, if I may, as a clarification?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Oden, I think I just had misunderstood what your request was. I would just like to let council know there is a budget update scheduled for the first study session in January, and I would just note that this position would not be filled before that time. And if council feels uncomfortable with the budget numbers, you certainly would have another opportunity to direct me at that time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Under reports or requests, counsel? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
A request would be to, to receive an explanation of how the tennis court lights at Ruth, at Ruth Hardy Park work. I mean, I've driven by there so many times in the last six months at night, and there's nobody playing, and there's plenty of light. So I don't know what the system is, but I'd like to understand it, and maybe we can do something to make it a little more efficient.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hodges?
I also have a question. When will Feral Drive be completed?
I would ask Mr. Fuller to field that question.
I thought that was supposed to be the first in November.
We'll have an answer for you tomorrow. I'll inform all the council members in the weekly report, but I'll call each of you also tomorrow with that information.
You can break it to us when we go to the parking structure, huh, then?
That's right.
At that occasion.
Thank you.
Okay. I've already made Mr. Ready aware of this, but I'll do it publicly. Seavag Transportation took some action some time ago to look at the idea of using surplus traffic signalization arms, poles, and devices to hopefully signalize the interchange at Gene Autry and I-10. Traffic is backed up tremendously there during rush hours, and we've...
And Daypom also, wasn't it? You were looking at that also?
I think also Daypom. My concern, of course, being ours, but you're right, Daypom. Thank you, Dana. And I, and I can't seem to get a clear idea of what was going on there. So I asked staff to assist in trying to bring a report back in the weeklies or, or a special memo back to us. We looked at it at Seavag, we approved it. It was to use surplus equipment, not buy new stuff, get it up, get those signals up. Even though it's going to be years before those interchanges go in, people are burdened by the congestion every day, twice a day to and from work. And I can't seem to get anything off the dime. So I asked for the staff's assistance. I know in discussing this with Mr. Ready this afternoon, we have complied with Seavag's request for those instruments that we have that are available that could be used at no cost, if you will, just to expedite that. And I don't know why it's not moving forward. I don't know if it's lacking electricity, or we can't get Caltrans, but I'd like to move this thing along to get some signals up. We do have signalized interchange work at Indian, and it does facilitate. It's still burdensome because of the capacity of the room, the roads, but I think we need to see if we can pursue this. So whatever you can do to move that forward, I would greatly appreciate. Okay? Any other council reports or requests? Any public reports or requests? Any staff reports or requests, sir?
There are none.
Thank you. We have our next regularly scheduled meeting for December 4th at 7:00 p.m. We do have a joint meeting with the Aguacalientes Benecue Indians on December 5th. That's held here, I believe that's here. Our next study session is December 11th at 7:00 o'clock. All of these meetings will be preceded by closed sessions at 5:30. And apparently, this states that there is no meeting scheduled for tomorrow, the 27th. Obviously, we met tonight. So with that, I...
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, can we have clarification on that joint meeting with the tribal council? It's going to be here?
Yes.
At 6:00 p.m.?
6:00, all right. And we're here to discuss the...
You may have your closed session at 5:30 before that meeting, and then the open session with the Aguacalientes will be at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers.
Is 5:30 adequate for closed session?
At the will of the council. We will have had a meeting the day before with a full closed session. The thought was that a half hour may be sufficient for that one item. I'd be happy to entertain a longer closed session.
That's Thursday? 5:30, just a half hour, all right. We got the night, the day before. Okay, then we'll meet here at 6 with the Aguacalientes in a joint session on the 5th, again preceded by closed session. With that, on behalf of the council, we wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, and it is now 9:20, and we'll stand adjourned. Thank you, good night.